Sorry, running a little late today. Thank you, everybody. The work session of the NAPLIS Council on Tuesday, July 17, 2025, will be called to order 304. At this time, would everyone please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Mr. City Attorney, please present the first item on the agenda.
Yes, sir. The first item on the agenda is ID 11725, City Dock Cars, presenter, city staff.
Welcome. Nice to see you all.
We are delighted to be here and we have a full team, full City Dock team with us. We are very pleased that Zoe Johnson from the Naval Academy was able to join us today, as well as both our landscape architect and architect, who you all have met before, James Sink, Chris Holler, our preservationist, Kim Daley, and then, of course, you know well, Marcus Moore, Hillary Raftovich, and our Public Works Director, Burr Vogel. So we, we have a brief presentation for you. And what we would like to do today is give you an overview of all of the various things that have been happening concurrently, so that you're up to date, not only on what's happening, but what are actions that are going to need to take place in the next couple of months. And specifically, we want to focus on our coordination with the Naval Academy and their construction, which will start in the fall of the wall, as well as what has become very critical, and that is stabilizing the Burdice House to protect it from harm's way. We also will be sharing today some funding options. The Public Works Director will be talking to you about that, as well as the phasing and the specific schedule for construction. So with that said, Council is very aware of the urgency. We've had this past year, two of the all-time 10 top flooding events. So each year, we get, it becomes more critical for us to get started, and it can't be soon enough, with the comprehensive flood barrier plan that you all have approved. And you've seen this slide before many times, but it's really at the heart of everything we're doing. Council, during the budget hearings, I know is aware of the project cost. Again, here are the projected costs that we anticipate and the revenues we anticipate in funding. At this time, we are expecting over $86 million in funding from federal, state, county, city sources. And that does not include some anticipated private donations. Again, Burr Vogel will be talking to you about some funding options and alternatives. As we look at this project today, I wanted to just step back for a moment with the Council for you to look at all of the aspects you have approved and all the aspects that have really been moving forward concurrently. Very, very important for the entire project was the successful P3 partnership with the garage. I talked with finance today, and it continues to, the Hillman Garage, continues to outperform the expectations and the predictions. And again, that was our initial upfront funding for this entire project, and it remains a critical revenue stream. Council, I believe, is aware that all aspects of the City Dock project, that is, the site plan, as well as the amenities, in addition to the Maritime Welcome Center, Prince George Street Park, which I believe the new official name will be Vince Leggett Park. All of those elements have been approved by both of our commissions, Planning Commission, as well as Historic Preservation Commission, and Maryland Historic Trust, has approved both concept and construction drawings for the Maritime Welcome Center. So with that said, I'd like to turn this to our partners at the Navy. This is what our current conditions are at Prince George Street in terms of flooding and in terms of elevations. Zoe?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. As you know, I'm Zoe Johnson. I work for Naval Support Activity in Annapolis and home of our Naval Academy. And I have been involved with the City Dock redevelopment, the City Dock Action Team, since its inception a number of years ago. But what I wanted to sort of share with you today is where we are with planning for flood protection along Prince George Street. We issued a press release a couple of weeks ago announcing the award of about a $2.6 million contract for a flood wall along Prince George Street, which, as soon as the contracted team mobilizes, will start towards the end of the summer, early fall. This project is the third of a major resilience projects that we have been successful in awarding the last few years at the Naval Academy. We recently wrapped up a $39 million flood protection project at Farragut Seawall, and we currently have about an $11 million road protection project under construction to protect the cemetery and the columbarium on installation called Ramsey Road. So we have been moving forward. We have a plan similar to the City Dock plan that uses a range of solutions, both natural resources, as well as structural solutions to address flood control. And we're very happy that we've been successful at designing and awarding, and now seeing a number of these projects begin to be constructed, as well as completed. But what's important with regard to this Prince George Street flood wall project that I wanted to share with you is that it was designed to integrate in with the existing concept designs of the City Dock's redevelopment. I want to kind of spend a minute just talking about height, in case there are any questions about design height, finished height, you know, our height from grade for security purposes. So the wall, where you see there, it says about 9.92 feet, is sort of the visual height of above NAVD, which is a vertical datum, a nautical datum. But it isn't the floodproofing. It's floodproof to 9.7 feet, and then there's just an additional ornamental cap on top, which brings it to about 9.92 feet, almost 10 feet. But where you see it step up is that at any point above just grade, wherever that grade ends up on any given day, our wall needs to maintain eight feet of clearance for security purposes. So while we're constructing to 9.7 for floodproofing, we need to be at grade, at least eight feet above grade for security purposes. So the wall was designed with anticipation of the park between Burdice House and the Naval Academy there that you see before you, that you're going to hear more about this afternoon. Our wall was designed and is proposed, or is planned for construction to be elevated, to ensure that we have that eight feet of secure height from the ground elevation of the park to be built before you. So I really just don't know if there's going to be, are you saving questions for the end?
Yes.
Okay. We'll save some questions at the end. But I just wanted to just mention that we really, this project has been awarded, has been constructed, and any changes to our design could compromise the project or, you know, cost additional funds for redesign, or could potentially compromise the timing of execution. It is about an 18-month project in terms of duration. We are working closely and have worked closely with the city on securing parking outages over periods of time along Prince George Street. We're going to take about five, no more than five parking spaces at a time, and we've secured, in the process of securing those permits and paying for those parking outages. There's one additional item that we're working with, continuing to work with the design team on the city with, and that is the landscaping. Also, from a security perspective, obviously landscaping and any, anything that could obscure visual detection of devices from an anti-terrorism perspective is of concern to us outside the wall. So we're continuing to work with the city and their landscaping team to ensure that we can maintain that 10-foot clear zone. I just want to thank the city for your continued participation and engagement. We have worked for a long time to ensure that these projects are compatible and continuing to support both the Academy and the city on the need to protect the city of Annapolis from flooding.
Thank you, Zoe. And James Sink from Mahan Michael.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide a little more color on the importance of Prince George Street Park and its elevation here as it's sitting between the Burdice House and this Naval Academy wall that Zoe just discussed. They're all coordinated in height, and maybe the first element in this chain of decisions was the elevation of the Burdice House out of floods way. And Prince George Street Park is also elevated, about two feet above the existing tree elevation. And as Zoe described, the fence and the wall that the Naval Academy has designed is all done in response to, and in coordination with this elevated park, which is also shown in this queue. So the elevated park is going to provide easier and accessible way to Burdice House, and it also serves as part of that flood protection on the water side of the park.
Thanks. Thank you. Chris, the Maritime Welcome Center, which is also elevated.
Yes, the Maritime Welcome Center building, seven. Anyways, flood wall. Eight, as required. The Burdice House itself raised up to elevation, five, above the required elevation.
Great. And then you can all see every day the Burdice House, and the city is now investing in historic preservation to restore, to stabilize first, protect, and then restore Burdice. Kim?
Could you just speak into the mic? Thank you.
When the project is finished, the porch will be put back on and restored. The windows that are maybe not original, but are historic, will be restored. There are enough still, the openings will be put back. The connection to Maritime Welcome Center will go where the non-contributing condition was located. And the roof replaced with metal roof, the entire building.
Thanks so much, Kim. The Preservation Maryland currently has control of the site. They anticipate that their work, which will be further shoring up the cribbing, as well as the first floor of the structure, they expect that work to be done within the next two to four weeks. And at that time, they will also take all of the debris from the site, so it will go to the city, hopefully no later than the middle of August. So when they are finished, we are, at the same time, expecting approval from Maryland Historic Trust this month on the details that Kim has just shared with you in terms of the shingling and the other roof details. And then we anticipate September to have approval from our Historic Preservation Commission. So this is really an amazing feat when we think about what we have today, which is this, and that we will begin working very shortly toward this goal. So with that said, construction is underway. You have all of these processes moving forward at the same time, the approval processes, Burdice, coordination with the Navy. And the, all of you, I think, have obviously seen at City Dock that the Harbor Master's old structure is gone. We have, the team has started laying all of the infrastructure for this project. And what's a tremendous challenge, and Burr will talk with you about this, is that we're building a very, very complex project in the midst of an active downtown city, and also in the midst of a maritime hub where we have events, we have boat shows, we have 4 million tourists. So that is the challenge that faces our Public Works Director and our entire Whiting-Turner construction team. Burr?
Sure. And just to add to that, it's really not just a challenge for the Public Works Department, engineering, construction. It's a whole city effort to communicate with all of our stakeholders, to minimize impacts to businesses, particularly the boat shows, and to Watermark, who run tours at the end of Susan Campbell Park. Next slide, please. As Eileen just mentioned, Preservation Maryland plans to complete Burdice House structural repairs this summer and return custody of the building back to the city. At that point, it will be resting at ground level. So it's important to quickly elevate it out of the flood zone. Also in this area, our goal is to bring back boater amenities and the new Harbor Master offices in the Maritime Welcome Center as soon as possible. Next slide. So regarding funding, certainly, you know, we do have the $86 million or so from various sources that Eileen talked about earlier. But options to help either augment or replace city funding would be, private fundraising is something the city could choose to pursue. Another topic that I keep hearing a lot about is, you know, what happens if we don't get the FEMA grant that we're counting on, the $33 million from FEMA? I view that as exceedingly unlikely FEMA's in the final stages of approving that grant, and really don't see anything that would upset that at this point. However, if that grant is not approved, and we need to make major cost reductions, we could start with removing amenities and going with lower-cost finishes. We would also evaluate building the park and the flood protections at the existing elevations, the elevations that you see there, but that would come with a rather hefty design price tag, as well as some numerous challenges that are the reason we decided not to do that in the first place. Next slide, please. Here we just see the phasing, phase one, which is really underway now. That's in the blue area from Craig Street, Susan Campbell Park. And then it will continue all the way over to the Naval Academy's wall at Prince George Street. While we're completing phase one, in the winter of '26 and '27, early work, like utilities work, will happen on phase two. And the next slide details some of those things. I would note that, next slide, please. I would note that work will pause for each of the fall boat shows, and we are also planning on accommodating the spring boat shows. Phase one should wrap up in the spring of 2027, and phase two concludes on our current schedule in late 2027. All right. So here's a look, just a little look at some of the temporary measures we've put in place this summer for traffic flow, bus drop, drop-off, handicap parking. So still trying to keep City Dock as available as possible for our residents and guests. We also have rented space for the Harbor Master Building. The Harbor Master has installed a boater shower trailer. And as soon as we get permits, we'll be able to, electrical permits, we'll be able to open public restrooms at Ford, right behind Ford Dock Street.
Thank you so much. The other activity that has been going on for the last few months, since early May, has been outreach to our downtown businesses. We have been working, there is a team from Economic Development, the mayor's office, Public Works, Department of Transportation, working directly with both City Dock businesses, and we have also met with the Downtown Partnership, listened to recommendations, ideas they've brought forward, and really trying to address their needs as we go forward on this very complex construction project. Our message to them that they are going to be sharing, and we would ask everyone to share with their constituents, is we are open for business. We have this incredible project going on, but that does not take away from our harbor, from our waterfront, and we welcome people to come to Annapolis during this exciting time. Thank you so much. We're here for your questions and discussion.
William Hunley.
Thanks. I'll try not to Bogart. I got a lot of questions. I'll start with just, I'll start with parking. We were hearing a little bit about with the Navy project, the five spaces on Prince George Street, kind of a rotating five spaces. How long do you anticipate each space, like each set of spaces is going to be gone for? Then overall, how long are we talking about losing five spaces?
We don't have the construction schedule yet from the contractor. We've awarded the contract. It is 18-month, a 12- to 18-month project. So at no point in time will more than five spaces be taken.
Got it.
We don't, at first couple phases, probably during initial laydown and construction, and there are a number of, the beginning of first phase, there's no need for those first five parking spaces. So we're still kind of working out those details. So I can't say with certainty it'll be five spaces for 18 months. It will depend on the construction schedule, the laydown schedule, and the progress. And what can be done without, prior to needing to work, we're going to do some work inside the fence line and then sometime, similar to Hanover Street and Wagner.
That's why I asked.
Yes, I'm sure it is. This is a little bit different, because we can do a lot more work on the inside, and it does not require as much excavation, or we don't have to take down as much wall before we replace the wall.
Fewer than six spots for less than 18 months. That's what I'm.
Five spots.
Well, fewer than six. That's what I'm.
Fewer than six, approximately five, probably not for the full duration.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, so it's mostly.
Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you go back to the timeline slide again? And can you send this to us?
Yes.
I don't see it on the agenda.
Is that the slide you're looking for?
Yeah.
On the phasing?
All right. So we're in phase 1A. Removal of the Harbor Master Building plus utility electrical work. Are we still on schedule to get to phase, I guess that's 1B? In November? And that would be, what's that entail as far as impacting Susan Campbell Park and Prince George Street Park elevation? Is that raising the grade?
Yeah, so that's completely closing it off and building the park. So if you look at slide, maybe slide four.
So a year and a half.
Or there, right?
Of just doing all the groundwork.
What's that?
Just a year and a half of doing all the groundwork.
Right, a year and a half to do the construction there. Correct.
To build the park.
Yeah, but mostly just bringing in dirt and, right, I mean, because they're.
A lot of utilities, right? You know, probably the longest portion of the work there is utilities. The site grading, once we are done with all the utilities work, the site grading will probably go fairly quickly.
So that's the phase when the wall is going to actually get started?
Exactly. Yeah.
And then phase two, what's the Craig Market House?
So that, you can think of that as Craig Street, where the old Harbor Master Building was. It's the orange area, going back towards Randall.
Okay.
Down towards Memorial Circle, and then the work over at the Donner Parking Lot.
Go back to the timeline. It should all be ideally completed by October 2020. I have too many questions. Oh, for the Navy. You said an 18-month project. Do you know when it's going to start? Sorry?
It's been awarded. It was awarded on June, in June.
It's been awarded.
The contract has been awarded for construction.
Yeah, do you know when that's going to start?
Well, any day. I mean, it's the contractor waiting for their, their construction and laydown schedule. And when they'll mobilize, they'll probably mobilize within the next 60 days, so.
And Ms. Vogel, you mentioned that the parking garage is outperforming expectations. That's good to hear, and a little bit of a tangent, but what are you basing that off of? What information? Because we on the Transportation Committee have seen no information about the performance of that garage.
So when, prior to awarding the contract and constructing the garage, there was, and I believe it was by Walker, is that correct? There was a parking firm that did projections of what they anticipated, the funding and the revenue from the garage to be. So the first year of the garage, which would be '23 to '24, my understanding from talking, checking with Finance Department, is that it was, and I don't want to give you an exact number, but it was a few hundred thousand dollars above projections. I believe it was over $200,000, between $200,000 and $300,000. They have, did not, I called today, they do not have a current number. They believe it is still doing very well, but they did not have the projections for the last, the numbers for the last few months.
Do you want one more, Neil?
Thank you very much. One of my questions was going to be about the garage, kind of going off on that tangent. You said that you were pretty confident in the FEMA money coming through. What if it doesn't? And I know that you say you're going to scale back, but what does that mean?
Do you have any specific questions? I did have a slide on that.
Right, so it says scale back amenities. What does that mean? Does that mean that we're not going?
Sure. So go, maybe to one of the park renderings would be helpful.
Which one, Burr?
There's a bird's eye view from there. Right there, that one. So if you start at the bottom of the screen, you see a lot of movable planners. You see wooden swing sets. You see a fairly ornate electrical building that could be scaled back to something much simpler and lower cost. We would remove that trellis, probably wouldn't do the stage, do a fountain that would cost less, maybe remove the fountain entirely, essentially make it just a very minimalistic open space.
Okay, so is there a plan? Like, do we have, if we have $87 million allocate, you know, earmarked for it, and if we don't get 33, like, is there a, is there a list that starts with, this is the first thing that comes off, this is the second thing that comes off?
No, really, really to, to get there, right? So let's say we tried to do this project instead of at 87 million, we needed to do it at 54 million. We really would go back in time three years. And the team that you have in front of you represents, it's kind of the tip of the iceberg of the entire team that has built this project. So to do the level of investigation and speculative work would, would cost hundreds of thousands or close to a million dollars to really go back and do another concept design, which is kind of what I, what I'm hearing from you. So the city is just, has taken the position that we expect FEMA has committed to awarding the grant by the end of August. We, we certainly don't gain much by diverting resources from this very challenging and complicated construction project towards this exploratory effort that would, you know, for one, for one thing, take our eye off the ball a little bit. There's still a lot of, a lot of moving pieces, a lot of balls we're juggling, and, and also costs a lot of money. So we're just not taking that stuff right now.
So it's kind of a wait and see for about six weeks? I mean, honestly.
Well, not wait and see, right? I mean, I'm making phone calls. I'm checking in.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, okay, so what I'm hearing is that we're pretty confident it's coming overnight. The question I keep getting asked of over and over again is the 33 million plus the million, you know, the monies that have come in from state and city and other properties, like, at what point in time will we decide what is cut? I mean, you just named off five or six different things that we could change. But are we holding off on the ideas of those? Are those sort of accessory items so that we can do the actual resiliency portion confidently with the money that we have?
We would make those decisions in the next 12 to 24 months following the loss of the grant. If the grant didn't come through, we would go back and redesign the entire project. And that would take, that, but the consensus building to get to the, the kind of the plan that we see today, took in my understanding from about 2019 through 2022, that it was about a three-year period when I started with the city at the beginning of 2023. The plan we have now is, it was, was more or less established. And so I think we could get through that concept design in less than 36 months, probably could do it in 12 or 18. But to answer your, you know, to give you a very direct answer to your question, when would that happen? It would be in the 12 to 18 months following a change in the available funding.
Thank you.
Alman Huntley?
Thank you. Alman Savage, I appreciate you asking one of the questions. I wanted to. Okay, I think I just have two remaining things. Is there any concern about the loss of the other two federal grants? I think you had one up there from HUD, and I'm not sure what the other one was. Is, do we have those in hand? What is the status of those? I know they're significantly smaller than the other, EDA.
I can, I can give you a rundown.
Yeah.
Okay, so first line, FEMA not awarded, EDA grant, $3.19 million awarded and all spent, in the process of collecting our final reimbursement. HUD grant, 1.15 million, still in the process of developing that grant agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. And then my other question is, I know we've been working through the National Environmental Policy Act, Environmental Review, we, I understand we're through that, but I know as part of that, we had some National Historic Preservation Act requirements, and there was this debate about it, are we going to do it before, are we going to do it during? What did we land on the archaeological investigations? And could somebody just explain a little more on what has to happen?
I can, I can speak to that. So we have developed a programmatic agreement with, you know, several partners, ACHP, the Advisory Council on Historic Preservation, FEMA, Maryland Historic Trust, and the city, and a number of other consulting parties, including Historic Annapolis. So that, that that programmatic agreement is posted along with the draft environmental assessment, and public comment closes this month. We expect to see the, the EA document, the finding of no significant impact to be, to be signed very early in August, if not, and not right here at the end of the month. So then the programmatic agreement, well, that will be signed also, it has to be signed in advance of the grant award.
Gotcha.
So both of those are available if you go to Access Annapolis, and there's, there's a link there. If you go to hit About, there's a link there to both of those documents. In fact, all three, there's a, there's a public notice from FEMA there as well.
And so as part of that programmatic agreement, we, we did land on the archaeological investigation, to whatever extent they need to occur, happening during construction, rather than we're going to do it all and then we're going to come back, right?
It's a combination.
Okay.
Right? And so we completed a geophysical scan in the spring. You're, you keep looking at somebody else. Is somebody else trying to talk?
It looked like maybe Ms. Fogarty was going to talk.
After you get done, I'll add something.
Sure. So we completed a geophysical investigation in the spring. That report's being finalized. So that's, you know, underground scanning. And then where, where that geophysical scan indicates we have some resources we need to investigate, a work plan, what's called a management plan, is being developed right now. That'll be submitted to the Maryland Historic Trust, will then go into the field and actually excavate and identify those sites for the Phase 1 work. So that's kind of, so that's kind of the preliminary stuff. Once we've done that, we'll get approval to start work. Then the, the programmatic agreement and the work plan also require us to do archaeological monitoring. So when we're doing excavation, we, we're required to have archaeologists on site monitoring the work.
Right.
Yes, and I was just going to add to what Burr said, that we also have a preservation easement over Burtus House, and that site, Maryland Historic Trust has a management proposal, all of the details that they have as well for the City Dock area, they have for this area, and we will get direction back from them. They have requirements for us, for the city, that are part of the approval in terms of where the construction can take place, and, you know, what can be done simultaneously, the same as what Burr described for the City Dock Park area.
Thank you.
Anybody else? So I want to commend you all, because I remember, you know, a year ago, we were worried about whether we would meet our markers, and was it going to be possible to meet those markers? And I feel we met every marker that we, we set for ourselves, and FEMA have been excellent to work with to get through to this point. Of course, we'll have to pivot if we don't get $33 million, but we'll do a downgraded park, or not a downgraded, but a modified park, potentially a flat park. And we still have 40, 50 million dollars to work with. That's not a little bit of money, right? So we, we will move forward in building to eight feet, so we can meet the academies nine feet on that Prince George Street, and we'll come out with a product, not as fancy, not as much granite, not as much bells and whistles, but still, we can add those bells and whistles later down the road. If we want to add a fountain down the road, we can add a fountain. If we want to add multiple other things down the road, we can do that. Thank you. I just want to commend you guys for the work.
Thank you.
Alman Savage, yeah?
I was just, because I know one of the concerns that have been raised have been about the Burtus House and the view shed. Do we have like a graphic representation of what it would look like from that angle, like looking down City Dock? I've seen, we've seen it from the water, from the side of this park, but do you have any from like in downtown City Dock?
It'd probably take me five minutes so I can, I can find one.
You know, we have, one of the things that, and Julian just took some drone images today, with taking the old Harbor Master Building down, it opens up the view tremendously. We're going to drop that shot in as well. We can send that to all the council. We have a, really a much, much wider view once that structure came down. And again, I can take a couple of the images that he took today, and we can add that when we send the presentation out.
And the building that sticks out 20 feet or so from the line of the front of Latitude 38, remember that structure is glassed on both ends? So in my view, that enhances the view. And then when you get into the building and get onto the balcony or onto the second floor, that's another enhancement of the view. So I counter what some people are saying on that, and saying that views will be enhanced, accessibility will be enhanced, because there's lots of yacht clubs that none of us are allowed to go to in this town, and this will be a yacht club that we can all go to.
Okay. Are those the images from Julian? Yeah, yeah.
Whoever's controlling the video, could you go back to the HDMI at the presenter's table? They're showing somebody else's computer, I think. Oh, no, that, that actually is mine. Okay, let's see what we can do to get, to get me up. It's so strange. Are there any other questions while we're, while I'm monkeying around with this? Please.
When we, when we presented this to Maryland Historic Trust, as well as to our Historic Preservation Commission, the, the images that Burr is trying to pull up, what they showed is we went from a much narrower view shed, which we have, we had prior to the demolishing the Harbor Master, to a much wider view shed. And that's the images he's trying to, to get for you.
That was fast. We need a zip line for you to get back.
Julian, you have access to that pic image you sent me today? You have access to that image you sent today?
Where is Ross?
It's about like a third of the way in. Yeah, go back a couple, you just passed it.
Yeah.
Right, so this view is from approximately Harbor Master Building was, where the new electrical building would be, right-hand side. That's Latitude 38 on your left, looking down the promenade toward the water, and then I'm welcome. Burtus House would be.
That one gives you good sense.
So this is a view of previous condition where you had the, and it's looking from the Market House, where the two lines originate, with its obstacles being the old Harbor Master Bird House Electric Building in the middle of the parking lot, plus the chop tank building. Next one. This shows the, you can see how the view opened up a little bit. The old Harbor Master Building being demolished, you can see the new electrical building there, new Maritime Welcome Center, that was the new electrical building at the Stade Park. Chop tank still being. So it's, go back and forth. Old, new. Quite a bit from the market.
Thank you. One, Neil?
Thank you. And the Waterfront Welcome Center is in one or one?
One.
And will the Harbor Master then move into that prior to Phase 2?
They'll move into it when it's open. Right, so it's actual, so you could imagine the park being finished, the building structure being there, but people working inside on the fire alarms, the elevators, paint, furniture, and things of that nature, wouldn't affect what we're doing on the flood protection project. So we could be all done with everything else in Phase 1, and still working on the interior of the Welcome Center, as well as doing whatever additional restoration work we do to the Burtus House. we do to the Burdus House. Kind of parallel tracks, if you will.
Okay. And then Phase Two could start before Phase One?
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
But Phase Two is also around the boat show, right? The 2026 Boat Show goes back on top of the park, right? Are we moving the boat show?
Right, I don't think we would start Phase Two before the 2026 Boat Show.
Right.
That would just be too many... Too complex logistically.
And just for... And I haven't seen any images. I've just heard about them. But the designers are building the ability to put a tent structure over the park, and they're doing it in segments. So you could do two sections if we wanted to use it for something else, or 10 sections, or six sections for the boat show. So I've heard about this, but I haven't seen it. But it seems like a great opportunity for you all to do other kind of programming there down the road, you know, such as Shamrock the Dock or some other things like that. So, and then we won't be, of course, you know, hammering big nails into the tarmac to hold up tents and things like that. But I'm looking forward to seeing some of those images when you...
I have one more.
Ron Neil?
And the 87.8, does that include the building though?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, again, I think, you know, we didn't think you'd be able to make those markers. I remember thinking it was going to be impossible to meet the deadlines, and we'd be... Everything would have to go perfectly to do that. And I just want to commend you again for meeting those deadlines. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your questions. We'll send out the presentation to the council.
Thank you.
Rob, more of Robert Coffee after this? How you doing? Come on, 48, please. Yeah, yeah, right. How you doing? Good? Nice to see you.
We're doing great. Thank you.
Everybody ready?
Yeah.
Harry has left the room, but we can start without Harry. How you doing? Welcome.
I'm plugged up. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Okay. Will, let's get the... AV happening? Welcome. How you doing?
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Rosalind Johnson, Director of Recreation and Parks for the City of Annapolis.
I'm Haley Stern, the Marketing Coordinator for Annapolis Wreckin Park.
And thank you for this work session and for the opportunity to present to you. First of all, I want to wish everyone a happy Recreation and Parks Month. It's our favorite month of the year. It's also our busiest month of the year every day for the month of July. We've had activities here in the city of Annapolis, mostly at PIP. We have plenty of activities. For example, today is our Zen Den. So if anyone's near PIP, you can stop in. It's an area, it's a zone where you can completely zen out. You hear waterfalls. It's dark. We have aromatherapy and just all sorts of things that you can do to calm down and relax in the room. One of the things that we've been working on, we had an intern from Towson State University. And so we have a new look. We changed our logo, modified it slightly, because if you recall, Annapolis was a lowercase a, and it's the worst place, way for children to learn how to spell Annapolis correctly. We're a capital city. It's a name of a city, and it should be a capital letter. So we modified it slightly. This cost us $0 to do. We had our intern Kendall Hendricks, who actually designed the logo, hearing information and doing research on the city of Annapolis. And Haley, we'll talk about that. Tomorrow is Recreation and Park Professionals Day. So we're celebrating our Recreation and Parks Professionals here in the city of Annapolis. But also Saturday is our Community Day at Pitt Moyer from 10 to 2. We have all sorts of free activities. These towels that you just received with our new logo will be a giveaway, because it's expected to be a scorcher. And people love to have towels so that they may wipe their brow. I'll turn it over to Haley, who has a quick presentation on our logo and what it means. It's all of five minutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. As I said before, my name is Haley Stern. I'm the Marketing Coordinator here. And as I came into this position, I realized that our logo needed a refresher. Director Johnson agreed, and I will go ahead and show you why. So this is our previous logo. This logo was created December 2008, so that is almost 20 years ago. Coming into the new with technology and everything like that, you can tell it does look a little bit dated. While the elements of what we wanted Wreckin Parks to showcase are still within the logo, we decided there has to be a more modern way to amp this up, to really bring the pizzazz that Wreckin Parks really gives. We want it to be more fun, more interactive. We want it to be something that everybody can see themselves in. Some of the issues that we had with the logo was the punctuation and capitalization here. We have Healthy Living Starts Here with a period on the end, which didn't really make sense for slogan-wise. It's not a complete sentence. And Annapolis, Recreation and Parks is all lowercase, which actually goes against our ideology to educate the public. With these ideas in mind, we decided to go a different direction, and our wonderful intern Kendall Hendricks helped us out with that, graphic design intern. But this is our new logo. These are just some of the details behind the design. We wanted to create a logo that represented Annapolis, represented Wreckin Parks and anybody that saw it. So if you take a look here, it does look like it's a sailboat here with the sun in the background, along with different elements in Wreckin Parks. We wanted to pay homage to Annapolis as being, so nicely put, the America's sailing capital. The sun represents, you know, playing under the sun, being outside, recreational activities. But within the sun, we have what resembles a ball of any kind. It can be a tennis ball, a basketball, volleyball, baseball, anything that showcases the sports that we do within our programs. And then over here, we have the triangle, which would be our sail on the logo. And within the triangle, you have an active person. This person can be stretching. This person can be reaching for a ball, doing yoga. And the best part about this person compared to the old logo are the sharp angles, creating a modern feel. This person can represent anybody of any age, any race, any ability, just like the people of Annapolis itself. And in the corner, we have a leaf to represent our environmental aspect, the nature in our parks, the sense of community that we also have trails and everything within our parks. And then the bottom part of our sail here has the waves to push us forward towards a healthier lifestyle and respect Annapolis' maritime identity. These are just some of the colors that we have for our logo. This is Olympic blue to represent athleticism, unity, the water, the sky. It creates that happy feeling, but still relaxed feeling that we wanted to convey in our logo. And it is supported by harbor gray, which is a very strong, modern statement to make with this gray instead of black. It's still a little softer than black, so we are still trying to be inviting, but keep it to a professional manner and keep it easy to read as those two clash together. And then this is what it would look like on letterheads or anything like that. We have Annapolis completely capitalized. And as you see, we have the Wreckin Parks capital, the Healthy Living Starts Here without the period. We chose Gotham font as our font choice, because it was easy to read. It's ADA compliant. It is a sans serif font, which we didn't want anything to be too harsh with serifs. We still wanted it to feel playful, still have it be representative of educational and professional in the manner. And then these are just our new design variations. So this is the one that we will be using the most. This one has our Healthy Living Starts Here tagline in it. This one has the... All the typeface right across it. And then this was just the plain typecase without the logo.
Thank you, Haley. And so just to underscore, we're not spending any additional money on this. As we change signs, we'll change our logo. So you'll see us phasing this out and phasing the new one in, which is the perfect time, because we are completing our signage plan that the team has done a great job with. So more to come on that. But just wanted to share with you. We might look a little bit different. Same people, same team, same values. But we just gave it a little bit of a refresh. And so speaking of waves, we want to talk about Cars Beach and the plans that we have for Cars Beach. We have worked, as you know, over with... I think we're coming up on a year now, a little bit less than a year, that we've been working on this. We had several community outreach forums. We had several feedback sessions. The master planners came back, and we presented to the community on June 18. We presented also on June 19. So this is the plan that they came up with for our shoreline and coastal. We did present to the Environmental Matters Committee. So for some of you, this might be a little bit of a repeat, but we wanted to have the full council completely be briefed on what we're planning at Cars Beach. So the community was really excited to see that we're bringing the beach back. They were shocked. They were like, wait, you mean people are actually going to be swimming at Cars Beach? And we said, yes, people are actually going to be swimming. So this is what you call the crab claw or the whale tail, depending on what you see in this picture. But you'll be able to walk all the way out parallel to the whale tail, and you'll only be up to your chest in the water. So it's not very deep water. But we are building this and bringing it back. The waves will not be very strong. The current's not very strong. So people will be able to swim, wade in the water. This picture is about 300 feet, so the size of a football field is a space that we'll have. You'll see the Get Down area, which is one of our favorite areas, because that's where a lot of educational activities will be taking place, where we will teach youth about tidal pools, waterways, wetlands, and all those sorts of things. And then there's an accessible kayak launch. If you've ever tried to launch a kayak in the water, it can be a very daunting task, and you have to have really good core strength so you don't flip over. This will allow you to kind of put in, no matter what your level is. And of course, if you want to put him further out, you'll be able to do that from the pier that we're going to show you a little bit later on. This is as presented. We are going to be submitting the permits to Critical Area and to all of the associated approval parties this month. Actually, in a couple of days, the permits are complete. We signed off on it. And so there might be some slight changes in order to get it through and past Critical Area. For example, the Get Down area, we're going to call that a wetlands mitigation and ADA accessible kayak launch, so that it's a little bit more clearer what we're going to do. This area where the Get Down area is, is mostly marshland and kind of swampy area that's usually mushy soil. So this will kind of clean that up and clear it up. It's very infiltrated with fragmites, which is invasive. And so we'll be clearing that fragmites out as well as part of the shoreline and coastal. And again, I want to thank the council for approving this in our budget. So we do believe that we have the full funding in order to go forward with this. Again, it's kind of funny money until we have a contractor who biz on it and says, yes, I can do it for this amount. So based on all estimates and subject matter expert input we've received, we do have enough money in order to be able to do this. Once the permits are approved, it'll just take a few months for the work to actually be done. And so this is the shoreline and coastal part of it. And parallel to this, Enscape is the company that did this. They just won Landscape Architecture Firm of the Year. So we had the best of the best working on this. And then, parallel to this, we had Adams and Associates during the master plan process. Again, this had a tremendous amount of community input. We actually had the meeting for this on a Wednesday night. And the Wednesday night, it had rained. It was thundering and lightning and storms. And we had at least 50 to 60 people come out on a Wednesday night to give their input on this plan, both the shoreline and coastal, as well as the master plan that we're getting ready to go to and show you. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that's excellent. I'm so glad that we're bringing back the actual beach and doing that restored. I'm really looking forward to... I hope we do some kind of inaugural swim there. And I could see things down the road if we do like a polar plunge kind of event over there. Because we used to... The Chesapeake Climate Action Network used to do a polar plunge for climate change at CBF Building, but they moved. But there are a lot of potential fundraising opportunities with the beach. So that's really exciting.
Absolutely. We would love to do a polar plunge, especially for such a great fundraiser, too. I know the Special Olympics would like to do one, too. So I mean, the possibilities are here now that we actually have a beach access area. So yes, we are super excited. And we'd love to partner with them to do it. So hopefully, we'll get it done relatively quickly. Next, we have the shoreline and coastal... I'm sorry, we have the master plan. We met with various groups. People were coming out of the woodwork to give their input on the plan. And so here is the major... The consultant came up with two plans. We married the plans together, and we took my favorite option, which is the both and. And so this is the concept. And you'll notice the white trapezoid with the six squares around it. That's the only difference between the two plans. Plan Two had a larger trapezoid and less white squares. Those large... The large trapezoid is kind of the stage slash pavilion area, and those white squares are the gazebos or cabanas. So we asked for a larger area and to keep the same number of cabanas. So we wanted to create a sense of place. So when you go to the facility, you'll know that it's Cars Beach. And how will you do that? Right now, you know, there's not a lot of good signage there, which is okay for the time being, because the beach is not fully open yet, and we don't have swimming there. But they took this out of Brisbane. I'm not sure where they got Brisbane from, but they just happened to be searching and said, oh, Australia. What a great... What a great area to look at for the sense of place. And I heard that it's the great part of Australia that they looked at. That's what a little birdie told me. So Cars Beach, we're going to have the artwork that will show Cars Beach. This will be, of course, a selfie area, area for many pictures, similar to our Breonna Taylor mural on the basketball court. That is another place where people must kind of stop and see. It's a sense of place. And so this will create the same excitement. For some traffic calming, there was discussion about putting something on the street, because we will have that crosswalk, and we kind of need to slow people down. There, it looks like it's a little bridge going across here. Of course, we won't have that, because we have large boats and tractor trailers who are going down this street. So we won't have that piece of it. And then moving in, there's a grove. And so hearing from the community, they wanted to preserve the history. They wanted to create the sense of place that used to be there and have artwork, because it was a musical mecca for many people to come. So this grove will have a historic interpretation. I should mention that we're also working with Blacks of the Chesapeake to create a curriculum. They're working with Anaronda County Public Schools and many other partners to create a curriculum where youth will be taught, one about Blacks of the Chesapeake, the Black Waterman, the history of Cars Beach, as well as environmental teachings. So these witness walks are a great location to kind of memorialize the history and what happened there. So that will be curated. This is another piece. And so we started to pull this out, but because the community did share that they'd like to see it open from dawn to dusk. But we kept it in, because we thought it was worth a conversation for the community to decide. We have Acton's Cove, which has lights in it at night. In the community, the neighbors walk their dogs. They sit on the bench, and it's kind of a gathering place. So we wanted to put that on the table for the discussion to occur. So these globes could either be illuminated or they could... So these globes could either be illuminated or they could be solid globes where pictures or portraits or artwork is painted on the globes and you could see them during the day. The bottom left-hand corner is a little bit too active for the night, but we just kept it in so that the community would have the benefit of seeing what we saw. And surprisingly, some of the community said, we want it to be lit. And I like this idea at night. That creates a whole nice vibe and aura. And then some of the community said, no, we don't want it at night. So we'll have to decide once we get closer in the process and we get down to the nitty gritty. This is a high-level concept plan that will give us direction moving forward. This is one of my favorite pieces of artwork because it resembles my favorite food, but Maryland's favorite, one of Maryland's favorite food, foods, which are crabs. And so this is a crabbing basket. And this artwork shows an opportunity that we have to create some type of sense of place. And you could be in there and you could talk and the acoustics could be such that the sound kind of stays in that circle, but you're able to hear what people are saying right across the way. So again, just creating another artwork piece, a piece of sense or a sense of place. Again, these are ideas. These are not the exact pieces, but this kind of gets the conversation going. And so you can see the feel that we're trying to go, go towards with this design. And this is a monument or memorial. Of course, we wouldn't have Harriet Tubman. We'd have one of the singers, Billie Holiday, or Ella Fitzgerald, or Chuck Berry, or someone who's, who performed at this, or James Brown, who performed at this location. So some type of homage to the musical geniuses that performed here. And then this one is super exciting because it can either be illuminated during the day or when the sun shines through it, it creates shadows on the concrete, or we could actually have a light at night. This could have all of the performers who performed at Cars Beach etched in some type of metal or some type of form, so that when the sun shines through or a light shines through, they're illuminated on the ground below. So it will remind, again, remind people of the history there. So you walk along from the entrance to the grove, and then you come to the social gathering space. And what does that social gathering space look like? Well, this is where there were cabanas as part of the history of Cars Beach. So the cabanas would still be here. So people could hang out. If you've ever been to Central Park, you'll see that people kind of take their own real estate and they do with it what they will, whether they're reading a book, whether they're having lunch, whether they're sunbathing, whether they're meditating or doing yoga. You'd be able to do that in the individual cabanas. And we could also have the history of Cars Beach or some type of history on the back of the cabanas, because you would walk along the back of the cabanas in order to get to the get down area. Again, just pictures of the cabanas and the pavilions. We could do yoga in the pavilions, so people could be, have yoga in the park. For Juneteenth, our performers would perform in the pavilions. Here's an example of the huts and kind of the back of the huts where we could have artwork or historic interpretation as people are walking along the pathway in order to get to the get down area or to get to the kayak put in. And then here's the visitor center. We want to keep the visitor center as small as possible. We're not trying to have a five-story or two-story visitor center. We want it to be able to contain the history, to welcome people, and also possibly be a place where people could gather and have meetings or small events at this location. And there was a water tower there. So there was talk of bringing the history of the water tower back. Of course, we wouldn't want one like the one that says Watkinsville, Georgia. It's a little bit too tall and will block some of the water views. But the smaller one is an aesthetic art piece that has various colors and stained glass. And so that's an option. And then the visitor center, these are just placeholders for what a visitor center could look like. Again, we would have a design group to do the visitor center. So this is not the design that we're landed upon. Again, this is just a placeholder. And then the ferry landing and the fishing dock would be a sense of place as well. And so that's the ADA accessible pier that goes all the way out. I will also share that the beach is going to be ADA accessible because you'll notice there's a path to get all the way to the beach. And then part of the project will be to have those Moby mats so that people can ride across the Moby mat on a wheelchair or walker. And then we'll have the beach wheelchair, so they'll be able to go into the water. They'll just have to transfer from their wheelchair to a different wheelchair that'll be able to go into the water. So we'll have that piece, too. And so the dock, again, is a sense of place. And so it'll be a larger dock with some covering and some benches. So if people just want to go and sit out and watch the water, watch the boats as they go to the port of Baltimore, or if they wanted to fish and possibly crab, I don't think it will be deep enough actually to crab, but they'll be able to fish at this particular location. So that will be another option that we have. And then, of course, we talked about the beach. So those are the pieces and the concepts that the architects have come up with and the designers. And we did have some meetings with youth for this as well. We actually took them to the site and got their ideas, and they wanted something fun in the water. So they wanted some type of monster coming out of the water or some beach balls or something to give the water some type of dimensions. And so we talked to Jennifer, who, this will be open water beach, that we will have lifeguards here at this location. And then she did not have any conniptions or anything, but she said she'd like for them to be movable so she could put them out when there weren't a lot of people out there and pull them back in when there are a lot of people out there. But it just adds another fun, creative way to kind of play in the water. And again, the water's not going to be super deep, so we don't have to worry about anyone, you know, kind of going underwater and us not being able to see them. And those, that's our concept. And we could take any questions if anyone has any questions for what we're planning.
Thank you. A lot, a lot to absorb there. I think it's all, a lot of good ideas. Two things I'd throw out there. One would be, you may already be planning on this, but some interpretive signs. I'm sure you all plan out there for the history, but I think in particular, some of the history of how we got to this point, right? With working with the Moors and, and all the groups like Blacks of Chesapeake. And what was stopped, right? As far as the alternative, right? It was whatever it was, 30, 40 homes, which now we're turning into a public park. I think it's a good history that should be called out. Also, I don't know if you've been there in a while, but the Philadelphia waterfront or riverfront park, I'm not entirely sure what the name is, but they've done a lot of improvements, too. And one of the things I really liked there is they had hammocks set up. And so people could just come and chill and enjoy the weather, breeze off the water, whatever they wanted to do. But it really encouraged people to hang out.
Absolutely. Excellent idea. I don't, we didn't have hammocks in there, and I love that idea.
Alden Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is certainly exciting, very exciting. And I just want to recognize Ms. DeeDee Strum. I know she's here from Blacks of the Chesapeake. So thank you, Ms. DeeDee, for showing up today and showing up all the time when we need you. But thank you, Director Johnson. Excellent presentation. Looking forward to what's ahead.
Thank you. And I did not see Ms. Strum in the audience. Ms. Strum, if you could come up and join us, please. Do you want to come up? And you can add about your work that you've been working on. This is even better. Thank you, older woman, for recognizing her. I did not see her.
And on behalf of Blacks of the Chesapeake Foundation, certainly thank you for the continuing work and effort to make this, this a dream that will come true. I will say that we have been very excited about leading the collaborative conversations with potential partners for public-facing education programs. And this presents quite a, I think, a great platform or venue for organizations like Chesapeake Bay Foundation, University of Maryland Center for Environmental Sciences, the State Museum, Bannaker Douglas Tubman Museum has interest. So these are partners that we've been collaborating with, probably close to maybe 15, 16 Black and Marine Science that have weighed in on their programs and how they envision in future, in out, I call it out years, as the park expands, on the opportunity for things like the pavilion to become a place where public-facing programs can occur, the pier that will be built in, I think, Phase Two. And we see that as a place for oyster gardening and restoration and having partners who specialize in that area that will talk about resilience, climate resilience, and the importance of oysters, not just on our plate or on a menu when we order, but to really, for shoreline protection, because that's going to be a beautiful, beautiful shoreline there. I would say that, since I've been invited to the table to comment, the visitor center, the description of it is, is certainly a city visitor center, but we certainly hope that it will still preserve the opportunity that's been presented several times for Blacks of the Chesapeake Foundation to inform the messaging that goes on there. That was one of the biggest dreams, was having an actual footprint or place for that to occur. And it's been referred to in many ways, in different ways, over the last two years in the, with the representation of Blacks of the Chesapeake having a presence there for purposes, again, of information sharing. So it is exciting. We had the opportunity to participate on June 18th at the Pitt-Moyer Center, again, on June 19th. And the buzz about the beach and the ability to go swimming, there are lifeguards to be there, that it was, that was everybody, it was electrifying. People were very, very excited. So I know I come out of the world of community development. I'm not a hard site planner, but I, my background and training is in community development and how you have, you know, you do, you plan for the people, the, the audience participation. And when I look at this, I see lots of opportunities for us to take what we've been able to do over the years and in recent months with the educational strategy and make recommendations on integrating the work of the partners, as well as BAC BLCF, in documenting and preserving and sharing the history of Black Watermen, the enslaved Africans that were brought here and their contributions to the maritime trades and seafood industry. So thank you all very much for the continuing effort to make it happen. I know that, I loved Rothlin's turn earlier, term earlier, when she said funny money. Was it you that said it? Yes. Funny money, is that each phase, of course, has to be funded, and then what can happen is based upon funding. And right now, we don't know, you know, necessarily, even with promises that have been made, whether or not those promises are going to be kept from funding sources because everybody's struggling for the funds. So it will, I think, over time, emerge to be a place where all that each of us have envisioned or dreamed that place could represent will actually happen. Thank you, Ms. DeeDee.
Thank you.
Alden Fidel, I say, and then Alden O'Neil.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry I had to step out. I thought I heard Director Johnson say that this was funded.
Yes, it is funded. From all estimates that we have, we have enough funding to be able to do the shoreline and coastal restoration. But my, my comment was, until we go out to bid with tariffs and things changing, I always like to just put a little star by it, because until we get someone who says they can do it for the amount we have, then, you know, that's where we are.
Okay. One question about the diagram, and maybe you explain this. I got the, the, I forgot what you call them now, the six cabanas.
Yes.
And the stage. What's the white building on the other side?
So that's the visitor center. That's the center that Ms. Strum was referring to. Yes, yes. And that'll be the interpretation. If Mitchell would hear, Mitchell Silver were here, the gentleman who led the master plan and process, one of the ideas that came out was to have a jukebox inside the visitor center that plays all the music that was played at Cars Beach, so we could do a list. And so we've talked to Blacks of the Chesapeake about part of, partially curating that list as well.
That would be awesome. Last question, parking. I know we were supposed to be trying to acquire some property to increase the parking. Can you speak to that?
Yes. So what we're going to do is we're going to manage the demand, because we think there will be a huge demand for this beach, especially with Sandy Point going to a permit-only access or reservation system access. So we're going to manage it with parking initially. And again, it'll be trial and error. We're going to come up with the best plan we think we have and see how it works. And one part might work, another part might not work. So we're going to try to manage it with parking. Right now, we have parking across the street at the Maritime Museum. And so, which is part of, which is a city park. Excuse me. So we will have parking passes, so people will pay for a parking pass, and it'll give them X amount of time, whether it's four hours, two hours, or what have you. I think four hours is a little bit more fair than two hours, though. And so once that time is up, they'll have to either remove their vehicle, or if the parking lot is not full, they could pay for another kind of parking session. If you catch the bus in, we're working with transportation to have this become a bus stop. If you catch the bus in, stay all day. Or if you Uber in, stay all day, and then you will just be able to enjoy yourself. So we did put an offer in for a piece of property that was for sale. That offer was not accepted, so we did not get that. So if the deal falls through, then we'll try again. But we're trying to work through that process.
Well, I, I am elated, so congratulations to your team for bringing this this far. And the timeline is?
So that's a moving target. As soon as our permits are approved, we will go to bid. It is with the Resilience Authority, the bidding process. The, the mayor had the foresight to put it with the Resilience Authority so we could move a lot faster. And so, once it goes out to bid, we're thinking 30 to 60 days max for that, because this is a special area and there are very few companies who will be able to do the shoreline and coastal renovation. And it'll only take a few months, once we get to the bid process. So the bid will be 30 to 60 days. And then to actually do the construction will be about three to four months or less. So we're working through that. The length of the time is going to be the permitting process. So we're trying to fast-track that. Director Jakubiak has been extremely supportive, as well as Assistant City Manager Giles, and then the Resilience Authority in trying to push that through, particularly with Critical Area. We've had our initial meeting with them, and we've been bringing them along the whole entire time. And we did have a site visit where, you know, they were kind of showing our plans and what we're trying to do.
Well, again, congratulations. I'm thrilled. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And thank you to the community, because this is really their design. This wasn't Department of Recreation and Parks design, it was the community's design. And we had everyone's input. And the Bay, Bay Woods and Chesapeake Harbor, they did not miss one single meeting. They were at every single meeting, and we had meetings for four nights straight. So totally dedicated, so thank you.
I'm sure the mayor keeps the Lipstick Brigade well.
Yes. The Lipstick Mafia was super supportive. We've had letters, we've had quick turnaround times. And, I mean, at one point, we got a letter in 40 minutes. Yes.
They've been amazing partners, and it doesn't always work that way. We all know that, right? Thank you, Rob. Well done. Alden O'Neil, or did you have a quick question? Alden O'Neil was next, but you.
Thank you. Two quick questions. I think, they're kind of interrelated. We were talking about funding and whatnot. Have we explored some options for some public-private partnership to, like with Blacks of the Chesapeake and some other organizations? And that kind of goes along with, earlier this spring, there was a lot of discussion and talk around Maritime Museum, their use of the space, and we're being given permits and paying for permits. But that seems to be like that would be a really great partnership to have, where they keep bringing people in, doing some of the educational opportunities that you were talking about, the water savings and things like that. Are, where are we with those? Are we working on those? Or do you have plans for those kind of partnerships to help funding?
So no, we don't have any plans for public-private partnerships. If you have any leads, we'd be happy to kind of chase those down. We don't have any leads as far as P3s for funding. We do have several earmarks in for this, and they were pushed forward. But again, the earmarks are always questionable on the federal level. I won't say always, but I'll say since January 20th have been questionable. So we are looking for funding. So the answer is no, not yet. And then the permit, I think you said, the Maritime Museum, they're currently using Cars Beach, and they're doing classes and all sorts of things there currently.
Thank you.
Alden Pendel Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Will we have, or will there be some connector between this facility and this site and the Hoppy Adams House in parole?
We hadn't thought about it, but it could be. When you say connector, what are you envisioning?
I don't know.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, that's certainly a possibility. Hoppy Adams' son was at our Juneteenth celebration. He flew in and we've been in contact with him several times. He got several decks of our Cars Beach cards and all sorts of things. So I think certainly we already have a relationship with him as well as the Cars Sparrows family. When we presented it, the son said, you know, you're just bringing me to tears because I never thought this would happen again. So all of the partners have been extremely supportive. So I think that's certainly a possibility.
That'd be great. And also contact. I don't know if you've had contact, you may have, with John Tower and our planning and zoning department because he's been working with us on the Hoppy Adams House. So John would be a good resource.
Okay, well, today, today, today.
Not tonight, tonight.
I know, right?
Okay, thank you.
Alun Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few other things. First, I'm so glad that you mentioned the oysters and the environmental education component. I think that's really key and I'm really excited to have that be part of that. Because I do see that as kind of a key part of the story is bringing together the environmental and African-American community. So, and I had a question for the director about the nighttime park. I find that it seems like it could be really, it's a really intriguing idea for me. I think it could be really, I think it has a lot of potential as far as getting people out, getting used to going out at night and actually enjoying the quiet, the stars, whatever. So I was just curious, like, from your experience with parks, have you seen that work in our locations? Do you think it could be done here?
I think it could be. Acton's Landing is a perfect example. We get zero calls about Acton's Landing, about nighttime kind of activity. Because the best way to provide security for a park is to have people to use it. So when people are there, you usually don't have nefarious activities. It's when people aren't there, well, and it's not well-kept that you have nefarious activities. Middle Branch, which is now renamed in Baltimore City, but that park was open at night. We've had nighttime events. But, you know, I think it has to be managed well and planned well. And I think the design can influence the activities that happen there. We, as a department, haven't really pushed one way or the other. But we wanted to present it to the community to start to have that discussion. And maybe the answer is yes, let's have it open at night. And let's create the design so it can be safely open at night. And maybe the answer is no, we don't want it open at night. So let's not create the design that can have it open at night. But we've seen it work. And people like to be out at night. And so whether we have, you know, an ice cream stand there at night so people can go and have ice cream and sit by the water and, you know, partake of, you know, whatever's out there or just, you know, have poetry readings at night or what have you. People walk their dogs a lot. That's what's happening there right now a lot because people at Chesapeake Harbor, maybe some at Bay Woods. There's, you know, a woman who's like, I walk my dog three times a day there, which is wonderful. And maybe, you know, your dog has to go to the bathroom at night, too. So, yeah.
Well, you have to watch out. The Baywood seniors can get pretty rowdy. Worried. No, but it's, you know, you could possibly include some, I don't know, telescopes or something for people to use at night. But moving on, oh, as far as parking. Yeah, I mean, I know that a number of, like, national parks and things do use their parking to limit attendance while they're figuring things out. But one thing I do want to just put in your brain as far as an idea, and it's a shame, I don't think Marcus is here anymore, but, you know, one thing I would like to get, because the seniors on that road have identified to me a desire to have consistent transportation they can use because our buses don't go down there because there are few turnaround areas. So we've floated the idea over the years of adding some kind of shuttle. And I think we did fund in the budget, looking at potentially extending, making like an Eastport circulator that could extend. We don't know how far yet till the study's done. But, you know, ideally, it'd be nice if that could extend, at least maybe sometime of the year, down Edgewood Road to help bring people from Eastport. But also just having maybe the Giant shopping center be kind of like a transportation hub where we can get people down. So even if we can't take the circulator down there, maybe we can get like a little electric gittany that the transportation department does have and do something like that on roads. Just wanted to plant the seed. I'm sure Marcus, I think there's a lot of potential coordination that we could have between the departments to help make that work so we don't have to rely necessarily on parking alone. Anything we can do, I think, to help would be.
Absolutely. On Juneteenth, they do bring those electric kind of golf carts. I underestimate what they are. But they bring those out and we do maybe pick up when people park at the Giant, maybe they do. I'm not saying they definitely do, but maybe they do. And maybe we do pick them up. So we've been working with Giant to kind of get it through their legal process to be able to do it, but yes.
Well, that's where ideally, trying to get the mayor's help before the end of the term is to get the city to purchase that corner lot. They wanted to put a Taco Bell. It's been a grass lot forever, but if we could make that into some kind of part of the hub, get people down to the parks, right? Maybe we could have signs there for the facilities down the peninsula. I don't know, but might be another idea.
Any other questions? Could I go back to the slide so of where you just showed the beach restoration and then we cover other parts? So, you know, there's so much for the new council and the new mayor to think about. And I want to thank you. And could you just tell us a little bit about the master planner and how lucky we are to get somebody of his pedigree to come to Annapolis from New York? I know it's.
Sure. Absolutely. The master planner was Mitchell Silver, who was the director for New York City Parks. And he was actually, I think, the superintendent is what they call him. But he was the equivalent of the director for New York City Parks. He is an urban planner by trade. He teaches at Harvard. And he is one of the top 100 urbanists in the world. And so he just retired from McAdams. But when the mayor showed me this, I was like, oh, we have to get Mitchell Silver because his designs and influence that he's had in New York City Parks, it screams this. He picks and chooses the projects that he works on. So when I called and was like, hey, Mitchell, you got to do this. And he's like, let me do some research and I'll get back to you. And he's like, this checks all my boxes. Where, what do you need me to do? So we're very fortunate to get him. This was his last project that he worked on before he retired. He officially retired, but he told me, don't worry, I'm still finishing the project because that would have been my second question. But we were very lucky to have him. He looked in New York City at areas and communities that hadn't had any investment for a generation. So they had less than $250,000 for a whole generation. So that means while this person was growing up and lived there, nothing had happened with their parks. And so he invested only in those areas during his tenure in New York. And so one of the areas that he invested in, he created a new park. And so they had a ribbon cutting and there was a little boy who was outside of the park area. And he said, oh, come on in, you know? And the little boy said, no, I can't come in. That park's not for me. It's too nice. Because there hadn't been those types of investments. So I think for so long, the city of Annapolis is like, hey, we can't go to the water because we don't have any beaches or water access for us when you don't have a lot of money. And so I think this screams, this is for the whole entire community to enjoy, whether you have a lot of money or you don't have a lot of money. You can come here and you can enjoy the water and you have access to the water. This is your park. And thankfully, to this council, you have access to this park and this water in perpetuity.
Pendell-Chris, then Alun Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that being said, it would be nice to have some little plaque or video of Mr. Mitchell at the park to kind of thank him in a more tangible way.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
He would love that.
In the visitor's center.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alun Savage.
Yeah, so I think to your last point, as far as like getting some of our disadvantaged youth to the park, you know, and I think, I think my colleagues have heard this story. I'll make it abbreviated, but way back, like 2017, when I first ran, there were two, three young boys from, I think, Bay Ridge Gardens. And they were just trying to get to the water to fish. And a community called the police on them. And our police were very, very good, no issues with the police. But the fact was, the boys were, you know, they're just trying to enjoy themselves and fish, yet they had to door. Because there was no, there were a few places for them to go, right? And to do that. And so I'm thinking, well, maybe we could do some kind of, I don't know, like, well, I think you know better than I, but some kind of like waypoint, wayfinding to get folks from some of the communities that are like, Bay Ridge is, you know, it's landlocked, right? But help get them to understand it's not that far of a walk here. All these signs, all these blue crabs on the sidewalk. I don't know, something like to get them down and used to and comfortable, I think would be really key to connect those communities.
Absolutely, we could. We have a machine, we call Linus, that is a robotic lining machine that we have. But Linus can also, I call it Linus, the guys call her Jenny. But they, they could spray a crab on the sidewalk. So, I mean, that's something that we could certainly do. And it's all robotic and we just put it in and we could spray, you know, crab going down there. Jennifer Rafique, who is our aquatics manager, made sure that the hack-a-pool is open. And if you go over there on any date, Jennifer is actually lifeguarding herself. And she has 25 faithfuls who go there every single day. And she's teaching them to swim. And we can't get Jennifer out of the hack-a-pool because she wants to cover it herself because her friends are down there. So I'm sure she will be doing some of that work, too, with the connections as well. Because she is determined to get our disconnected youth to places where they could learn to swim and be water safe.
Yeah, and just, you know, a little bit off, on a tangent here. But next week, I believe, Senator Shneke Henson organized a bit of a response get-together at Bay Ridge Gardens. Because, and especially now that they've, so I'll be attending because if I'm re-elected, they're going to be in my ward. Alderman Gay, I think, has been invited. But the point is, and they've also, I've heard the rear gate's going to be locked in that community now, unfortunately. So the kids are going to have to walk on the sidewalk. So we're meeting, we're trying to get Public Works to help speak. Their main concern to us was, well, we want to make sure it's safe for people to walk now because there are going to be more people walking out on Bay Ridge to get to school, to grocery store, as far as cutting back through the fence. And so I think this would be something good to let them know about is, you know, we're still looking to connect you to resources and facilities that we have, like be it Pitt-Moyer or future, in the future Cars Beach. Right? So I can forward you information if you're interested in joining that meeting.
Please. Because we also have our Camp River View that I've shared with you all. Camp River View is in St. Mary's County, I believe. It's along the water. It is a beautiful property. When I was in DC, it was my favorite property. It's not in DC, but it's owned by DC Recreation and Parks. And so Paulette at Stanton Community said, I want to take my kids somewhere. I was like, oh, why don't you take them to River View? And she's like, what do you mean? So we met with DC, we went out there. It's along the water. It sleeps 60 or 70 comfortable in the cabins. But you can also pitch a tent on the water right there. There are ATVs, horseback riding, basketball. So we're looking at September 5th, 6th, and 7th to go over there for a weekend retreat. We're also, the chief, we partner with the chief of police so that we can have a community mediation session, too, from the Clay Street shooting that took place. Because it became apparent and obvious to us that conflict resolution is something that's kind of missing, those skills. You know, when we get upset with someone, we think, you know, oh, let me just handle it this way instead of, you know, saying, hey, let's sit down or who can you call if you want to sit down with something, with someone to discuss an issue that the two of you all have. So we're working with them for that. And so the three young people who lit the Roman candles, they were coordinating with Officer Smichael so that they'll be able to come to Camp River View as well. Because the youth need experiences and opportunities that they otherwise wouldn't have. And so when we're talking to our friends in DC, they were like, when their children got there, they're like, what country are we in? Because they'd never been outside of DC and they've never, you know, it just looks like a whole new world. The air is different, just everything is different when you're out in nature.
Finlayson.
Yes, very quickly. John Wesley, United Methodist Church adopts Bay Ridge Garden. And they would be a great resource to take because they could actually walk their kids down to the beach. So we have volunteer organizations, you know, they're part of what was the adopted community. Now it's had another name. But, you know, that would be a great opportunity for them to do a field trip with the kids. So we need to tap into the Seafarers Yacht Club as a summer camp with kids. You know, they would love, I am sure, to bring their kids down to the park. And most of the members of that club recall and attended Cars Beach back in the day. So there's all kinds of connections. So we just need to make those connections.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
And we met with Crab, too. That was the first time we met with Crab. And they're super-duper open to us coming down there and having our youth come down there, particularly when they have cancellations or even setting up special trips down there. So we had a great conversation and a great meeting with him.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I wanted you to bring that slide up. You know, can you point out where the manhole cover would be in that diagram?
Yeah, so the manhole cover is to the right a little bit more and back a little bit.
Will it be removed or relocated? Or that's where it currently sits. So I just want to show how we're building out the shore.
Yes. So it's an eyesore. We're working with Anarondo County. And they have a consultant who's going to look at the options because it can either be recessed back and kind of hidden. And if you go to Cars Beach now, you'll see this big, not attractive sewer manhole that's metal and underneath of it is a rectangular concrete thing. And underneath of that is some other stuff that's sticking out. So either that would be moved back and recessed so you wouldn't even be able to see it. Either it will be put further below the ground so you wouldn't see it and go further out into the bay. It's just for access. It's nothing that, you know, is kind of going into the water. So they are working on that. And the county executive, as well as Councilwoman Radovan, has been on it. So we're thankful and grateful that they have a consultant looking at the options and will present the options.
So in 2026, people could be swimming in this beach, right?
Yes, that's our goal.
Which is exciting for us. And, you know, the work that the council's done here, the money that we've chased, the construction that we stopped, all that sort of stuff. I mean, that's, you know, over $10 million worth of work that everyone's given. And the money that we've found in our budget to do this construction to match the earmark that we got from our senator and contributions from the state and the county and all those things, you know, are all because of the work we've done, the relationships we've built and the worthiness of this project. And, you know, to have a place that was on the Green Book brought back to life, to have that history, that modern history be told here, I think we're all going to be really proud of it. So I won't be mad, but I'm looking forward to coming back to the ribbon cutting and, you know, having a swim. Alman Huntley.
Sorry, I know we're trying to wrap up, but I just had a quick question. You talked about swimming. I found out recently that generally, our policy for city parks is we don't allow swimming, right? And so how are we, is this going to be an exception? Or obviously, we want people to swim here, right? We're all on the same page. So is this going to be sort of an exception to that? Or is this going to be part of a broader plan to change some of those policies, update some of those policies?
So we don't necessarily have a policy per se. The rules have been no swimming, but that doesn't mean the rules have to remain no swimming. If you're talking about trucks and boat ramp, we have no swimming there because you, you don't want to swim in the marina areas because of possible electrical current or what have you. But this location, we currently have no swimming signs there and we have no swimming signs there because we haven't done our due diligence. We are not doing water quality testing. That's not true. Anarondo County does do water quality testing once every two weeks at this location. I'll say we're not looking at it because we don't have active swimming there. And they've been far below the one, far below one during the testing. I have actually looked at it. But we don't know that that water is clear, that the floor of the bay is clear of any type of debris or anything. So once we start doing that, I think we have an onus to actually have lifeguards there to make sure that the community is safe when swimming. So I think that's probably why we have these no swimming signs because they should kind of be managed. But there are areas where historically people have jumped in and, you know, people go swimming. It's a rite of passage for young people in the community. But I think that's something we probably need to look at holistically. I will share that we have the money for a master plan and we're getting ready to engage in a whole master planning process. The master plan was last done in the 80s. So we have the approval to move forward. It's fully funded with some state funding. So that master plan will probably kick off in the next month or so. So you'll be hearing more about that and we will be looking at our swimming rules. But this will really set us up for CAPR accreditation, which is Commission on Park and Recreation Agencies. Out of the country, there are about 10,000 recreation and parks departments and about 210, 220 are accredited. So in order to be accredited, we have to have one have a master plan, which we don't have. We can't plop a master plan from 1980 on their desk. So we'll have that. We need an ADA transition plan, which we don't currently have. So we'll have that. We need a recreation programming plan, which we don't have, so we'll have that. But it'll be 100% community input. It will look at our parkland and say, okay, for a city of 40,000 people, do we have enough parkland? We already know with the metrics, we don't, but how can we look at getting more parkland and classes and programs we should have? But it'll be a holistic look at our department and that will better situate us to become CAPR accredited. But we're going to, we're getting ready to go for a gold medal. And that's because the programs and activities that we do are bar none the best in the country. So we don't do as much as big jurisdictions, but we're competing against other people with like, that are like size.
Wonderful, thanks. I appreciate you answering my question. I've been meaning to talk with you about this swimming at parks issue generally. So we can talk more about it offline. The mayor just made me think of it on this one. Thank you.
I think there's actually a story coming out on it soon, right?
Oh, I don't know, but I just know I, I found out recently I've been breaking the law or the rule. Apparently I'm not supposed to jump into Spa Creek.
Well, this is another, another amazing park with another dimension. And I think we also, we all know we brought dozens more acres online for the city for new green space and new water access points. But this will be so special. So we just want to commend you for the work that you've done here. So excited to watch it come to fruition. And I know there's lots more other park things to talk about, but the things you presented today were amazing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In closing, I would just say I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as the members of the city council for all of the support that you gave to Vince Leggett and Blacks of Chesapeake over the last few years to make this dream actually come true. And we continue to look for the opportunity to stay at the table, to continue our conversations with Rex and Park Department and to inform the messaging. Thank you. Oh, yes. Tip, when, when, must have been March, it was March 28th. And it was shared at the meeting when Ms. Johnson did a presentation to the collaboration that we facilitated at Chesapeake Bay Foundation, which was over 40 some people. As a matter of fact, Alderwoman Pendell Charles was there and Rosalyn zoomed in on the big screen. And when she shared the rest, the plans for park, for the shoreline restoration and swimming, the beach and swimming, I was sharing with Dina later, that Dina Leggett later that afternoon, and she started crying. And she said, this is even bigger than Vince could dream, she said, because he had been told so many times that the policy was no swimming. And it's funny that she should turn to me and say, share what Dina, Dina's reaction because he too, I guess, and everybody thought there was no swimming. And so she said that he never envisioned that it would actually happen, that once again, not only could people go to, go to the beach for swimming, but again, that it would be a welcoming place for people of color to feel that they could come to the beach and swim as they did in the days of June Crow. And the Cars Beach being the place where you were welcomed without regard to your color. So again, thank you, yes. But Dina, Dina has been very, very excited every time she has been a part of the updates and the presentations and she sees the shoreline restoration plan, the beach, and that the conversation continues to be that of, there will be lifeguards and there will be swimming. And she just says, Vince, I know you're hearing all of this. So again, we thank you all for revisiting that. And I know that Ms. Johnson was a great champion for, we've got a waterfront park, we're going to swim there.
Well, and I'll remind everyone too, African Americans are seven times more likely and Hispanic Americans are five times more likely to drown than their white counterparts. So for us, it's important. We're surrounded by water. People need to know how to swim no matter what color they are. So thankfully we have an amazing aquatics manager who's making sure that people know how to swim. And if you don't know how to swim, at least you're water safe. My mother would never learn how to swim because she was deathly afraid of the water, but we needed her to be water safe and she ensured that I knew how to swim. And so we're hoping that parents will do the same.
Thank you. Again, thank you very much. All right. Is there anything else for good order? I, I will bring this up, Roz, Rosalyn, Rosalyn, Director Johnson, sorry. We have been approached by somebody that are forming a foundation that's trying to find us an extra half a million dollars for the Williams Whalen Field renovation. We know we're going to, we have a shortfall there. And then I did do some outreach to Baltimore Ravens just the other day and got pretty close to Bouchardy and, and to talk about some naming rights. I mean, his story is a pretty amazing story that he, he played on those fields when he was a young man and he went on to be Steve Bouchardy, right? The owner of the Ravens, you know? I mean, that's a pretty great achievement from just a kid that went to school in this area. So, you know, I think it'd be worthy of a naming if the council supported that idea. It won't be, it'll be up to you. But, you know, if the foundation can find us another half a million dollars, then we've got a great multipurpose field and we can finally bring Williams Whalen back for everybody, so.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for finding that because I think, we think the $500,000 will kind of be the, the bridge funding that we need in order to push this project forward. I have some numbers I'll share with you too with our, we have the rosters in for our permits. And I think the highest percentage of Anapolitans at play was with the All-Stars and they're at 62, 60, oh, 65.9% of their players are from the city of Annapolis and they have the highest number. So you'll remember 75% is our threshold, same as the county. So they're at 65%. And then the numbers dip down to 35% Anapolitans are permitting, are playing on the permitted fields. I'll send those exact numbers to you. We just had our staff meeting and went over those numbers. So I will share that. But it's imperative that youth have access to safe places to play and artificial turf will be the way to go. We're working on our baseball fields right now because our baseball fields are not doing well with all the rain that we've had. And Rodney drives by the county baseball fields every day, the diamond. So we're going to look at the ball diamond mix that they use because it's absorbing the water a lot faster than ours. So we know we're not where we're supposed to be on those baseball fields right now, but we're working on it. But when we have this artificial turf field, we won't have to worry about any of that. And so the partner that the mayor has found is traditionally, this is kind of outside of their normal funding, but they realize, thanks to the mayor, the importance of youth having access to fields, not necessarily travel teams, but youth who just want to get out and play, who might not be that good. And maybe they aren't going to go into theater because they can't get on the, was it the soccer team, Alderman? Okay, the soccer team, right. So we want our youth to have as many opportunities as possible and this will be huge for our youth.
And that parent, as a tech guy, has done really well and has a group of parents and they're like, look, if our kids can't make the first team, you know, their, their options are so limited, you know, why? We need other options so that kids just don't give up. You know, they can go and play on fields where there's, you know, not the same intensity. That's what his thing of, we'll take it if we can make it.
Absolutely.
Um, anybody else, anything else? Thank you so much. Anything else? Good order, council. All right, Beattie Jones, thank you.